It is six thirty, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there anyone here for open forum? I know there are two people here for open forum. Is there anyone else here for open forum? Anyone else for open forum? All right, if I can have Nate and Tim?
Well, thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Wake Park City Council and other guests. My name is Nate Gove. I'm the Executive Director of the Minnesota Board of Peace Officer Standards and Training. To my left is our appointed public member who is also the Chair of our Board, Mr. Tim Bildsall. And we just wanted to come up to recognize the Wake Park Police Chief Dave Bentrood, who served on our Board from 2013 to 2018. Dave obviously has a long and distinguished career as a police officer and police chief in Wake Park, and he was one of the peace officer appointees to our Board by the Governor, and he holds the slot at the time of a police chief, which we have two of those on our Board. So I just wanted to recognize Dave's service to the Postboard, his work as a volunteer member of the Board. And so I brought up a plaque that says, "Presented to Dave Bentrood in recognition of your dedicated service, Minnesota Postboard, September tenth, 2013 to January fourteenth, 2018." And I'd like to present that to Chief Dave Bentrood. Short and sweet. So, thank you for, the drive took longer than the presentation. But thanks for taking time for us to make that presentation.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Maybe if I could just add, I just want to thank-
All right, your two minutes is up.
All right. Thank the Council and Sean for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the Postboard. I, as I reflect back at my career, I think this opportunity will probably be on a short list of highlights of my career. I really enjoyed it. These are class guys, and I really enjoyed the experience, so thank you for that opportunity.
Okay, thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, review and approve Council agenda.
Any add? Do we need to add for approving of the water tower?
No.
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Further discussion, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item, consent items. Item A, approved five seventeen eighteen city council minutes. Item B, approved six four eighteen city council meeting minutes. Item C, approved two AM liquor license renewal for Hammer and Hammer Doing Business as Friends Bar. Friends Bar. Item D, approved massage license for Poppy Saloon located at Salon. Maybe it's a saloon, I don't know. The last one was a saloon, so what the heck. Poppy Salon located at four forty-eight Great Oak Drive. Item E, approve agreements between City of Wake Park and City of St. Cloud regarding Wade Avenue improvement. Item F, approve hotel motel license for Astoria Inn. Item G, Thirteenth Avenue North Utility Disconnects. Item H, approve assignment of ownership of regional land holdings. And item I, approve MOU for Independent School District seven forty-two for the school resource officer for 2018-2019.
Can I pull F?
F?
I'd like to pull E.
I'd like to pull G.
All right, well, let's not approve any of the material. Well, let's go A, A, B, C, D, H, and I.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, on my favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Item E, that was yours, Frank?
Yeah, when I was reading the document, and it talks about sharing all the costs. Who created the document? Did Gordon?
I created it, Gordon reviewed it and approved it, as well as-
Had it reviewed with Terry and with Bill.
Okay, I was just kind of curious if we had attorney staff time that gets included into the cost sharing of the project.
I, well, his time to review the document, but probably very little, to be honest with you.
Gordon's G.
Just as long as he's, as long as he's on E here for a real quick second.
Yeah.
Is St. Cloud going to take care of their part of the cement work, or are we doing that and billing them?
We're doing it and billing them for it, but they're going to be completely responsible for their side.
We're going to do the complete job without them-
They're going to keep track of which side of the road they're doing the work on.
Right, but that's going to be, that total cost of that sidewalk work is all on them, and ours is on us, and then any of the other stuff is shared half and half.
Okay, just making sure that-
I'll move to approve. Second.
Further discussion, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. F, I think that was yours, Mike?
Um, F, uh, let's see, oh. On this, I heard we've been having some problems out there again. Have those been taken care of with the approval of this? It would give them more time to operate?
The calls have gone up, and I'm hoping that this appointment will help fix that.
What do you mean appointing? If we give them the license to operate, and the calls continue to go up as they have been, we would have to revoke the license then at that time, is that right?
This is a result of our new hotel ordinance that requires management to be backgrounded. And so we were doing that, and this is a new employee of the motel. So I'm hoping that that will, things will improve.
So it's not a new owner, but a new, new manager, so to speak? That's my, my problem is, you know, we came up with that ordinance to help get rid of, or help to take care of some problems that may have happened at these motels. And the problems really haven't gone away, from what I understand, or am I not correct, or?
You know, improved when it was still under control of Hotel Six. We made a lot of progress in improving things there. But, and when there was a change in ownership to Astoria Inn Suites, it's kind of, it's gone back the other direction, which is concerning. It's concerning for me. But I'm hopeful that this management change will help correct that, get back to where we maybe were in the latter days of Hotel Six having control of that property.
The, the hotel ordinance will also require them to do annual training with the police department, so their staff will have to go through those trainings. And I know we have met with the owner, and the owner seems to be amenable to trying to address that. I think some of the calls that they get are, are related basically to some of the clientele, some of it not necessarily criminal related. So I think you have an, you have an opportunity to address this if it continues to go down that path, whether they have this license or not. This is just the initial license application. They'll have to come back and renew again, which the process will be every, October is about when their license come in at reviews, and it has to be done by the end of the year, like our other licenses and stuff. So this doesn't prevent us from doing it, but maybe with getting them the license, getting them trained, maybe some of that, and if it, if it still becomes a problem when they're going to renew it, or at any time in between, we can look at that opportunity at that point. But I think when we originally looked at some of the calls, there were a lot of the calls that were things that might have been nuisance kind of related, but they weren't necessarily criminal in nature. That, you know, we talked to him about ways that we could look at reducing some of that, just because the nuisance calls are also a nuisance. But I don't think whether you approve this license or not, that's going to change the outcome of where we're at. We got to give them a little bit of time to be able to address some of those kinds of things. This license, by having that in place, is going to give you the opportunity to take something away from them that they're going to be able to need. They have complied with everything that they need to in order to be able to get the license application. They've done the background checks, they've done, they've, they've gone through that entire process of what they needed to do. So at this particular point, that's why it's on the, on the agenda for, for being able to be considered now.
I understand where you're going, Mike, but I also read in the information that the Chief did approve this license, so.
Well, that's, I know, I've seen that, but I, I just have a hard time.
We have to, we have to give them a license before we can revoke it, so this is basically a step one.
I thought we gave them one already.
No, we're starting with our new one.
This is the first license.
The first license, and they're the new-
Oh, okay.
And to be clear too, the license check has to do with the requirement to check the new manager of the motel. That's a requirement, the general manager or whatever. That, that's what I approved also is the management of, so we checked their background now too. So I'm, I'm hoping that this will create opportunity for us to do the training that Sean was talking about, what the reality is. I mean, when it comes to budget hotels on the West End, this is really the only one, and there's going to be those types of that call that are going along with that. That's just kind of given. But we'll do it, we're doing our best to try to keep a handle on things, and we will continue, and this ordinance will help.
Yeah? Want to move to approve F?
So move.
Second.
Further discussion, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And G, Vic, was that yours?
Yeah, it was mine. I was reading through the staff reports, and I noticed that you're talking about taking those two bathrooms out. Really bothers me that we're doing that. That park is, is used by kids all the time. When I was at the parade, the neighbors were approaching me, asking me, asking us to reconsider that activity over there. And I'm wondering why we have to take those two bathrooms out. We just can't leave those in.
We're replacing them with new ones.
New ones.
Are you putting a new bathroom right there?
Yeah, yeah.
Same spot, actually, actually more.
That was in my, that's my misinformation.
If I, if I can explain, we have two existing bathrooms. One on, we call it the South Bathroom here by City Hall. It's got the dump station.
That's the one I'm talking about.
That has been closed down. That's one that's proposed to be removed completely. The North Bathroom is going to have a new set of bathrooms there. We're waiting to get the numbers back from those quotes. Excuse me. So through the process, if we're going to pave our street out there, repave it with an overlay, our ordinance calls that you shouldn't have any existing services in the street, otherwise they need to be capped at the main. I, I make other businesses, homeowners, property owners do that. If they remove a house or something like that, they got to go out to the main and disconnect. So with that, we, we had found that, we're presuming that we're going to get a good bid on this bathroom, and we'll replace the North Bathroom with a larger ADA accessible bathroom with family restrooms in it also. So that'll go in that same site and use that existing service, so we're not removing that one. We did have a couple other ones that were stubbed out years ago into the park that were never going to be used, so those need to be removed. The one I has a little bit of angst about is the South Bathroom. We're using it right now until we get the new one up and running. And I, I'm not sure what the number's going to come back at, because I wish I had that before I needed to disconnect it. So one thing we could do is, is possibly award the bid tonight and with all of it, and leave it up to my discretion to either cap that service at the main or just do it behind the sidewalk. And we would be going against our ordinance, but it wouldn't be unprecedented that that would happen. And then you just wait another twenty years, and then you would actually go out to the street and do it. So that's, that's my little bit of angst with that whole thing, and it was hard to put it in a memo and thinking I might get some numbers and see where we're at tonight. Otherwise, once we do that, then that South Bathroom here will be done. I mean-
I don't want to do that until we know. I don't want to disconnect any utilities.
The challenge you have is the road.
The road.
I know, well, then we need to not do the road. We have to pause, or shift it, or do something else.
Bids have been lit.
There's, there is really no danger, I mean, to, to leave that South Bathroom up, and then we'll just, when we take that thing down, we'll just cap it behind the sidewalk like we do with other spots.
So then you can leave it.
And it'll be marked at a future date, whenever the road gets done in the next fifteen, twenty years. You know, SCH and the city will have numbers on that, and who's ever here then will know that that's got to get disconnected there.
I'm not sure I want to take it down.
Well, that's, that's my concern too. I don't see why we need to take those South bathrooms out. It's, they're used, the neighbors want them-
They do not, they do not meet ADA standards at all.
I understand that.
So, and the new, and the new set gives you more total bathrooms than the two combined right now, so.
Where's the site of the new ones going to be?
The existing North Bathroom, in between.
Same spot as the other one.
Same spot.
Same spot.
Exact, same spot. That way we don't have to pay for new water and sewer service, so.
If them bids don't come back right, we're putting the cart before the horse.
I still think, I would still ask Council to go forward with it and, and leave it up to my discretion to not do the South Bathroom, and just let it be there. We just don't do that one. We do have five valve boxes out there. It needs some attention. Now's the time to do it while you're digging this, you know, you have the street, so we don't have to have a problem on that down the road. So if you're, if you have a little bit of angst with it, which I, I have a little bit on that South Bathroom right now, without not knowing, we can always go that route, but I would like to take care of the other two existing services and the valve boxes out there, at least before we pave here.
Yeah, I'm just not in favor of taking those South bathrooms out.
But you can choose, we can have that discussion later if, that, this does not, this will not take care of, we'll-
We didn't have that discussion.
Yeah.
That South Bathroom's going to come out one way or the other, but it can be replaced, because it's not ADA accessible. So if we're, if we're telling, and especially you, Vic, if you're telling everybody, everything's got to be ADA accessible.
Well, that's absolutely true.
Now, all of a sudden, we're, we're keeping something that's not, and so if we decide that we want to put one there, then, then we put one in there that actually is ADA accessible.
If you don't touch it, it don't have to be fixed. Unless you're remodeling, okay?
I, I'm proposing to ask you to award the bid tonight to CNL less the disconnect of the South Bathroom. We'll deal with that, we'll deal with that later, so.
Is there any plans for putting some temporary facility there, maybe?
We-
Be used if-
The plan that I thought we had talked about was, is that we were going to take both of them out and put a bigger one in in the middle there with ADA accessible, give them some family bathrooms, and not, not replace it. If you want to revisit that again here, we don't have to make that decision tonight. I understand that there's a couple that are a little bit uneasy about it. Okay, let's save that until we get the bid, and then we know where we're at, and then we can have those discussions.
Yeah, we need to talk about that again.
And that's fine with me. I mean, but I just like to get the other stuff done so that we can continue with our paving project. We don't have to cut a street after it's been paved.
Go ahead and amend it.
So, repeat for me, Bill, what you would like to have done?
Well, I don't have the exact number, but I'll ask CNL to, to delete the South Bathroom disconnect at the mains.
Okay, and what about, you said other two services you'd like to have changed or corrected?
Those are, those are existing. Those need to come out. They won't be used.
The only thing that he wants you to change based off of this is just taking out the disconnect for the South Bathroom.
Yeah.
Everything else stays.
And just, if we have to just cap it on the other side of the-
If, if, if you guys choose, then we're just going to cap it at the property line, like we would do any other business, and then it would be flagged for the appropriate disconnect.
So we're not going to disconnect the other bathrooms either?
No, 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 no. Those stay in, those-
Bigger ones.
Well, yeah.
Those will stay in service until whenever we do the construction. Which now would look like it's probably going to be in the fall, so your, most of your heavy summer is going to be gone.
So there's, basically the South bathrooms, the connections are going to stay, so they can be replaced?
Right.
If we decide at some point we can do that?
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that. I just don't want to see those bathrooms gone.
That's fair.
All right, want to move to that?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve with the change that the South Bathroom connections will remain.
Along with the rest of the, the quote?
Aye.
The rest of the quote's still good.
Yes.
Right.
Or however you want to word that.
For a second?
I don't, somebody got the proper verb used for the motion, though?
That's what Vic's doing.
That's what he did. He's, the motion is to just, to make, to make all the disconnects except at, in the street, except for the South Bathroom, to make that one on the curbside.
I'll second that.
Further discussion, on my favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Imposed.
Order one. All right, we now made it finally to the audit. We don't have any money left, so don't-
You have to, can you talk into the microphone, please?
Is it on?
Yes.
Red button there.
There it is.
Sounds like it's on, that's on.
That's on.
There we go, okay.
That's better.
Sorry. My name is Justin McGrath, and I'm with Conway, Dothan, Schmiese in the city's auditors. And I am here tonight to present the city's financial statement and the audit report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. So the format we're going to follow, it's up on the screen. There's also a bound copy for each of you. This is kind of the presentation. All the information in here is derived from some of the thicker documents, PDF or paper copy that you should have received.
I got it.
Yep. So, so everything that I'm going to cover tonight is, goes into greater detail in those documents. So I'll just jump right in, and if you have any questions as I'm going through it, please feel free to, to interrupt me or stop me and ask your questions.
Yep.
So page, first, first couple pages, page one. This kind of gives a summary of the city's, or of the, the audit, independent auditor's report. So this kind of goes through the city's responsibility and the management team, our responsibility as auditors throughout the audit, as well as the standards we follow to conduct our audit. The big takeaway on page two is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly. So that means these, the numbers within the audit report can be relied upon to make decisions in, in their accuracy. Also on here, in the beginning of the audit report, there's a section for management discussion and analysis. So this gives your management team a chance to kind of, more in narrative format, explain what happened throughout the year with the city and its, its financial going ons. So those are the, that's kind of the reports that we put out. Jumping into the numbers on pages, on page three. So a statement of net position, this kind of gives them a high level overview of the city's financial standing as of a point in time, that point being December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen. Kind of break it down by assets, liabilities, and in the city's overall net position. So current assets, these are things like cash, accounts receivable, prepaid inventory items. You'll see there, looking at sixteen versus seventeen, there was a significant decrease, and a lot of that's related to your cash balances of the city. And, and the main driver of that decrease is the money spent for the Public Works facility. So conversely, if you look at non-current assets, these are things like buildings, equipment, infrastructure, vehicles. You'll see that had a significant increase. So that's really just that, that cash from two thousand and sixteen being converted into a physical asset, the biggest of those being the Public Works facility. Moving to the, kind of the bottom half, current liabilities. There was a slight decrease in current liabilities in two thousand and seventeen versus two thousand and sixteen. A lot of that's related to contracts payable, so work done on the Public Works facility that was paid after year end. So you didn't have as much outstanding bills as the twelve thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen, that you did in two thousand and sixteen. Non-current liabilities, these would be things like your, your bonds, notes payable, leases, long-term leases. You see there was a decrease in that in, in two thousand and seventeen. The main driver for that is the city's pension-related liabilities. So your, your net pension liability, you know, the investments that the PERA invest in did, over, exceeded the expectations. So actually, the city's portion of that liability went down in two thousand and seventeen. And then net position of the city, so this is, if you get rid of all your assets, liquidate all your assets, pay off all your remaining debt, this is kind of what you would have left over. You see that there's an increase in two thousand and seventeen versus two thousand and sixteen, which is kind of the trend the city's been going in for the last several years. So it's good to build that up and leave yourself in a good, kind of a healthy financial position. So this, this is a, you said a high level overview of all the city's funds and activities. So now we'll, on page four, we'll go into the individual funds themselves, and some of the changes that happened at a, at a kind of a more micro level. So start with the General Fund. The General Fund is the main operating fund of the city. You'll see here on, on page four, the cash and investment balances. There was a decrease in, in the General Fund's cash in two thousand and seventeen compared to two thousand and sixteen. You know, that cash balance had been building up for the past several years. However, in two thousand and seventeen, some of that cash was borrowed, I believe some was borrowed at the water fund. Also, some of that cash was kind of spent down for some of the renovations at the City Hall here. Looking at the General Fund's revenue expenditures on page five, this gives you a visual bar graph of where the revenues of the General Fund are versus the expenditures, and then kind of the remaining fund balance of the General Fund. You'll see in two thousand and seventeen that expenses actually outpace the revenues of the General Fund. And we'll kind of go in greater detail on the makeup of those revenues and expenditures on the following pages. One of the big takeaways we want to take away from page five here is the overall fund balance of the General Fund. So a good metric we as accountants, auditors like to use, is take a look at your General Fund in terms of months' worth of expenses. So if we take all your General Fund expenditures, break it up into twelve little blocks, and see how many we can fit in that green line, right now you're sitting at about nine months. So that's, that's a good ratio to have. We usually recommend six months as a minimum, just in case there's any delay with LGA monies or remittance of property taxes from the county. There's usually enough kind of reserve in there to continue paying those day-to-day operational expenses of the General Fund while those issues are being worked out. So that's very good for the General Fund. Now we kind of go into a breakdown on page six of the types of revenues that are in the General Fund and the amounts that are there in two thousand and seventeen. You'll see here, kind of the, the big decreases in two thousand and seventeen versus two thousand and sixteen are property taxes and other revenues. So property taxes decreased in two thousand and seventeen, and that was kind of reflected in your levy and in, in your budget. As far as other revenues, that decreased. There's some, some developer reimbursements in two thousand and seventeen, or other reimbursements that just weren't, or excuse me, in two thousand and sixteen that weren't there in two thousand and seventeen.
I have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
When I was reading the document previously, it shows that our sales tax collections are down. Is that a, is that a trending thing that's happening, or is that just a kind of a fluke?
No, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a fluke, based on the, you know, because it's, you know, local sales tax across all the communities in the area. I think everybody's getting a portion of that decrease. I don't think, and if, as far as I'm aware, the, the allocation of it amongst the communities hasn't changed very much. So I feel like you, you, if you look at those sales tax returns that the county's getting, you'd see that overall number of sales is probably going down as well.
Well, my concern is because we've got the new amphitheater we're talking about, and we're hoping to pay our portion of that with sales tax money.
Mm-hmm.
I, our numbers that we have projected for that are very conservative on those parts, and so I'm comfortable over the term of that, that we're okay. But you're, you are correct in the fact that sales tax has some fluctuation within that, that, that has that, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, so as long as those, I guess it really depends on how the, how the local economy is doing is the big driver of that sales tax. But there was a decrease, I think, looking at some of the other communities on that breakdown that the city gets of dispersments from the county. It was less than we saw in two thousand and sixteen. So moving on to the expenditures of the General Fund on page seven. Looking at the, you know, the expenditures down here are broken down by department. So, you know, salaries, wages of general government are all kind of rolled up into one line item here. You'll see here that Public Works, Public Safety, those are your two, two biggest departments for expenditures in the General Fund. And these can be kind of misleading, as whatever department seems to have the higher capital additions, capital outlays from year to year, or bigger projects. Sometimes those will, will bump one up on the list, bump one down on the list. But the overall trend is that those two departments are some of the higher expenditure departments of the city, and barring any change in the city's operations, you would expect that trend to kind of continue going on, going forward. There was, Public Safety did have a significant decrease compared to two thousand and sixteen in its expenditures. A good example of that is the, the capital outlay. I believe in two thousand and sixteen, there was about seven hundred- there was, um, about seven hundred thousand dollars spent, uh, for a fire hall land purchase right around that amount. So, so you see, when that, when some of those capital expenditures are taken out, you kind of get back to that operating, uh, level for each department. Uh, so that's the general fund. I will kind of shift gears away from the general fund into the city's special revenue funds. These are funds that are set up, um, to, to kind of maintain and record all the, the activity for a specific purpose, a- and, and those funds, um, you know, serve that purpose, and then they, you know, the hope is that they're self-sustainable. Uh, so looking at, on pages eight and pages nine, we have your special revenue funds of the city. Um, the largest increase in the fund balance in those special revenue funds was the Parkland Development Fund. Um, a lot of that is due just to contributions made to that fund, uh, for, for that specific purpose. The largest decrease you'll see on page nine is your taxing, tax increment district, uh, number two. Uh, so that's, um, kind of expected, you know, that the purpose of that fund is to collect tho- those tax increment monies, and then, uh, those monies are used to pay some of the city's debt, I believe it's two thousand, two thousand fourteen debt, um, TIF bonds, so. So once that money's earned by that fund, it gets transferred out to your debt service fund and used to pay, uh, your ongoing debt service obligations. Um, you know, the local office of sales tax, which you did bring up, had about one point three million dollars in revenues, um, but a ma- majority of that is transferred out, like you said, to others, the city, to help pay for, um, other projects or, or other purposes. Uh, so those are the special revenue funds of the city. Uh, looking at the capital project funds on, on page ten, uh, you know, I kind of like capital project funds, you know, they, they're used to record kind of the life cycle of, of these major projects that the city has going on. And this slide gives you a, a good look at, uh, kind of the full life cycle of a capital project. Uh, you have something like the public works facility, who, uh, at the end of the year was kind of still ongoing, still in that kind of prime of its life cycle, Seventeenth Avenue South, you know, it had, most of the work was done by the end of two thousand seventeen, so you see that large decrease or, uh, negative change in fund balance. And then the Eighteenth Avenue South is kind of that, that placeholder fund, uh, that's, um, kind of still, still in its infancy of, of that project. Um, so, so yeah, there's the capital project funds, you know, the public works was the big, was the big to-do in two thousand seventeen. Um, so you did see some increase in the fund balance, some fund balance there. So shifting gears from the, uh, kind of the governmental funds to those business-type activities that the city has going on, and then we'll start with the water fund. Uh, you see the water fund had a, uh, you know, another increase in its cash balance, so it's come a long way from two thousand thirteen, um, to building up those cash reserves. Uh, and a lot of that, that increase we're seeing is just caused by the operations of the water fund, you know, the rates are being set at a level to help build up those reserves, um, for any future projects or any unexpected major expense of that fund. Looking at page twelve, you'll see, you get a look at the, the revenues of that water fund versus the expenses, and then that net income amount. Um, so you're seeing here, you know, the, the revenues of the fund are, are covering the expenses, and, and I think, um, a- a- and you look at the gap between the blue line and the orange line, um, from seventeen versus two thousand thirteen, you can see that it's come a long way, and, and you can, it's reflected in the cash balance of the fund. And then on page thirteen, what we do with this slide, the purpose of this slide is to kind of show, you know, the operations of that fund, so we take out some of those non-cash expenses, non-operating expenses, and show, here's, you know, the operational net income versus what your yearly, um, bond payments or debt payments are, and the ability of the water fund through operations to generate enough cash to pay back its debt. So you can see here in two thousand seventeen, it generated more than enough money to, to pay back the principal on those bonds that are outstanding. So that's, it's, it's, it looks like the water fund has come a long way, and I think, you know, keeping track of those rates and making sure they're set at an appropriate level as it, as operating expenditures go up, I, I don't see that changing in the future. Moving on to the sewer fund, uh, page fourteen, you'll see there's another increase in the cash in the sewer fund. Uh, this is also cash provided just through the operations of the sewer fund. On page fifteen, you'll look at the expenses of the sewer fund versus some of the, the revenues of the sewer fund. Uh, you'll see that the expenses actually out, outpaced the revenues. Um, however, you know, there's, uh, non-cash expenses included in there, such as depreciation of your current infrastructure and, and equipment, things of that nature. So while that's not necessarily reflected in your cash balance of the sewer fund, it does come through on your, your net income amount. Um, the largest expense of the sewer fund, uh, obviously being contract services, so the, the, the cost that the city has to pay to, um, ship the, the, the kind of the waste to the sewage plant, and, and that, uh, that is your, that is your biggest expense of the sewer fund, but unfortunately, that, a lot of times those rates are out of your control, I know. Uh, so those, those are kind of the numbers of the city. Um, you know, i- it looks like you're looking at the, the governmental activities and some of those business-type activities. Um, I think overall, you, you're looking at some pretty good numbers there. Uh, so, moving on, away from the numbers to some of the, some of the other fun stuff, we get to put your, your full-time staff through here. Uh, part of our audit, we look at compliance, compliance with state laws, state statutes, things of that nature. Uh, we look at things like contracting and bidding, getting several quotes when it comes to certain thresholds. Uh, we're happy to report through our testing, the items that we tested, uh, we, we came across no issues of non-compliance within the city, so, um, hats off to your full-time staff here on staying on top of the requirements of those laws and then implementing them in, in their processes and procedures. Uh, another, another thing we look at, uh, as part of our audit is internal control, so how a transaction flows through a city or throws through, through the city, and who does what, and, and the checks and balances within, uh, kind of the city's financial reporting and transaction recording process. Uh, we know no issues there. Um, so again, a, a lot of that comes down to having a solid plan in place, who's gonna do what, and sticking to that plan. So again, good job to your, your full-time staff here. Uh, the last section I have for you is, um, on pages seventeen and eighteen, uh, some of, some of the required communications that we as auditors have to give the councils, let you know, here's how the audit, the audit process went, um, any disagreements we have with management, any difficulties we have with your administrative team, we're happy to report, we had none. Uh, I know sometimes, um, between Shawna and Keith, they're probably tired of our phone calls and our emails, uh, but we do appreciate their patience and their willingness to work with us throughout this, throughout this process. Um, and as far as general recommendations go, you know, in the past, sometimes we would touch on things like sewer rates, water rates, utility rates, um, contract bidding, things of those nature, but we don't have any, any general recommendations to give you as the council or your staff, uh, going through this year's audit process. So, so that's kind of my, um, my presentation this evening. On the very last page, you see my contact information, as well as Paul Harvago's contact information. I know Paul's been here for the last several years, um, so I know I got some pretty big shoes to fill, but I hope I, I, I was able to answer all your questions and, and give you the information you were looking for, so. So I want to thank you again for your time, and i- if you're going through this stuff in your free time and you feel like you, you know, you had a question you wish you would have asked me or Paul, uh, please feel free to reach out, give us a call, shoot us an email, or stop by the office.
All right. Counsel, any questions? No? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin.
Good report. All right, fund closures and transfers, how about that? We need to move those, don't we? We need a motion on those, don't we? Fund transfers and closures?
Yes, your motion would be to consider the fund transfers and accept the two thousand seventeen audit report.
Somebody want to do that?
So move, second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Riverwood Massage license revocation. Is that Chief or is that Gordon?
Our board.
Come on, Gordon.
I, uh, he gets all the words.
Okay, yeah, there you go.
As, um, part of the background for this, um, just reported a summary of our investigative work into, um, the, uh, activities at the Riverwood Massage.
Excuse me, Dave, is your microphone on?
I believe so.
I don't think so.
Oops, sorry, I was not on.
Thank you.
Um, the, uh, what was included in the, in your counsel, uh, packet was a summary of our investigative activity, uh, that led to us, uh, getting, obtaining a search warrant to, signed by a local court judge to, um, uh, make entry into the Riverwood Massage, and, and it, uh, corroborated a lot of what we had, um, believed was occurring. Uh, and based on that investigation and the, the evidence that we gathered over the course of several months, uh, I, uh, issued a letter, uh, to the proprietor, uh, Riverwood Massage. Uh, the letter was, uh, reviewed with, uh, counsel, uh, and, uh, so they were given the opportunity to appeal, uh, which was tonight, uh, which was, uh, required or allowed, uh, under the statute, so, uh, I guess that's, uh, kind of the highlights, I guess. Uh, if you have any questions about the information in the packet or the investigation that we conducted, uh, let me know.
As part of this process, and I, I realize that, um, on your staff report, I had done two, and the one that got on here doesn't show those, the public hearing requirement, but you officially have to hold a public hearing, so you have to open a public hearing and give the public an opportunity to respond before making a decision to, on what you'd like to do with the massage license.
Did we publish that?
As the what, yeah.
Did we have to publish that?
No.
We don't have to publish it?
They were shared personally.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so while it is, uh, seven eleven for a public hearing, is open on the re- revocation of Riverwood Massage. Is there anyone here to speak for or against that? Anyone here to speak for or against that revocation of a massage license for a Riverwood Massage? Anyone? Somebody want to move to close it at seven twelve?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed at seven twelve.
Okay, I will, uh, move to approve the revocation of the enterprise license for a Riverwood Massage.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you.
And then, I think there was a, weren't there two revocations? There was also the license holder.
Yep, there's another one here someplace. Yep, two of them here. I'll move to...
First you ought to have a public hearing.
Oh. Public hearing is now open for the owner of the Riverwood Massage at seven thirteen. Is there anyone here to speak on that revocation for that person, individual?
Now, this takes immediate, or is there a period of time?
No, the period of time was built in from the time that we gave them a notice to, tonight. We had to allow a, a certain amount of time from the time of the notice to the hearing before the city council, so the time is run. If you take the action now, it's done. The licenses are...
So they have to close the doors tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing's closed at seven fourteen.
Move for revocation of owner license.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, AMP Projects proposals.
Um, as we move, um, forward with the, um, AMP project, um, and as everyone is aware, uh, the city did, um, receive, uh, five million dollars out of the state bonding, uh, funds, uh, to assist us with that project. Um, very exciting to, to be able to do that, um, but as part of that bonding process, there are, um, a host of regulations and guidelines and contracts that we need to get through in order to be able to use and expend those dollars. Um, as we've gotten into this project a little bit more, there's, um, two, uh, proposals that are in your packets. Um, the first one is, um, a proposal from a company, um, called NTH. Um, their proposal would assist us through, um, the state's bonding process and the B3 guidelines. The B3 guidelines with the state, um, are a lot of the environmental and engineering and, or, environmental and, um, the electrical, some of the, all of those sustainability types of guidelines that are required for every project. Um, and this individual would be the one to assist us through that process and getting us through the, the steps that we need to. One of the steps that we're hoping is potentially even considering an exemption of the B3 guidelines, considering it is an outdoor amphitheater that's only going to be open four to five months. Um, I'm not sure that we'll be successful in getting a full exemption, but I don't think it hurts to ask, but this, um, NTH is a company that's been around for over twenty-five years that has the experience, um, working and addressing with those kinds of things, and so they would be the one that would coordinate those things and working with our staff and our other consultants on this project of, um, of gathering that information and being able to, um, to move that along. So their proposal is included in this packet for you. Um, I'd be happy to go through that with you if you'd like. Um, the other proposal that is in there as well is, there's also a contractual, um, contractual agreements that we need to enter into with the state that require us to have legal services. Um, and in my discussions with Flaherty and Hood, um, that is a service that they can provide at, I wasn't aware of that at first, that they could do that. Um, as you all are aware, they did assist us with their lobbying piece, so they're a natural fit because they know the project very well, um, and so their proposal is in here as well. Um, so the recommendation, uh, to move forward to assist us, um, I think it's important that they both get brought into the process to really help to make sure that we can get through these processes, um, and keep on our timeframe of wanting to get open in two thousand twenty. Um, so I'd be happy to answer any questions, I'd be happy to go through any of those proposals with you, but I'll open it up now for anyone that has a question.
Well, I just want to say, I read the, uh, NTH proposal, I was extremely impressed by the company, their client list, uh, pretty closely, uh, deals with the arts part of it, and I think their fees are reasonable, so.
All right, somebody want to move to approve or deny the following proposals for NTH and Flaherty and Hood?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously.
That was my, that was Frank and...
I made the motion, and who's second?
I did.
Sorry, I'm calling double duty.
Somebody did.
Okay.
Vic.
Okay, I guess we took care of all that on one thing there. All right, sounds good. Moving to approve, uh, approve bills.
Hey, they were much easier to read this time around.
Yeah, they are.
Like it.
Well, that must be the new system. Some of these things are working, but...
Much better to read.
We just hope we balance at the end of the month.
I'll move to approve the bills.
I'll second, at least if you can read them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. I have a couple things. I have a thank-you letter from, uh, Tri-School Donation Committee, which is Apollo Cathedral and Tech, for the donation that we gave them from charitable gambling, and I also have one from Junior Achievement. That's all I have.
Um, wanted to mention, as, as you're all here, uh, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Summer Conference is coming up in Mankato. Um, the dates of that conference are Wednesday, July twenty-fifth through Friday, July twenty-seventh. Um, though, the, the Coalition does a good job, I think they have some gubernatorial, um, uh, panel discussions that they have with the candidates, um, so if, if you are interested in attending that, I know a couple of you mentioned that you might be, um, I would be happy to take care of the registration. In fact, um, Shane called me to ask me who's coming from the city, and I said, "I will let you know tomorrow," so. Um, other than that...
Well, so far it's what, Vic, myself?
I'm not going.
Oh, you're not?
I can't.
Okay, well, then it's myself.
You know, I never have, but maybe I will.
Myself, it's, uh...
You can go, you've got it. I may end up going as well, I, I haven't quite decided.
You can decide and let Shawna know, we, we have some, we do have some time, so...
You're not going, Mayor, you're not going?
Uh, at this time, no.
That's the twenty-fifth, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, any other business? John? The other John?
Just want to thank everyone for coming out to the garage sale and visiting and purchasing our wares, uh, a couple days back.
What do you mean visiting? We really were tired.
One of your top priorities, huh?
We, we pleaded for everyone to come out, I think they deserve a shout-out for those that did.
Were we able to cover your wages for the day?
Bill?
All other duties as assigned.
Just remember that. Any que, any, Chief?
Yes.
All right. Gordon?
Nothing.
All right, anybody else?
Yep, I just want to congratulate John.